Okay, we'll come to order. Welcome to the January 12th, 2021, Meeting of the Salem Planning Commission. Shelby, would you choose?
Commissioner Augustine.
Here.
Commissioner Griggs.
Here.
Commissioner Heller. Commissioner Kopcho will be arriving late. Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Pollak is absent, excused. Commissioner Schweikart.
Here.
And Commissioner Slater.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, Shelby. Moving on to 1.1, the elections. Do I have a motion? Commissioners Slater or Commissioner Heller? Somebody's out there that's going to make a motion.
Thank you. I guess to kick this off, I will be happy to nominate Commissioner Griggs for a third, I think, one-year term as president. I'd be happy to nominate Commissioner McKinley as vice president, if he's interested in that position. I haven't heard from him.
Excuse me. Let's do nominations for each position separately. So let's start with the president and then move to the vice president.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'm done with my nomination. Commissioner Griggs.
So we need a second.
I second.
Second.
Mr. Heller's our second. Discussion on the motion?
Well, I will just say, I will just say a word about why I am making a nomination, at least as a fairly new member of the commission, and that is, as I said to Commissioner Griggs, I appreciate her willingness to entertain all the discussion and not rush us to a conclusion. I think that has been an important part for me to hear everyone's opinions and even tolerate some of my, I'm sure, annoying questions over the past couple of months. So I think that's a critical role for a board chairperson or president, and I think Commissioner Griggs has done a great job with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Slater. Your questions have not been bad at all. They've been great. So any more discussion on that motion? Seeing the raised hands in the participant screen, Shelby, will you call the roll for that vote?
Commissioner Augustine.
Hi.
Commissioner Griggs.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Heller.
Hi.
Commissioner Levin.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinley.
Hi.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Hi.
And Commissioner Slater.
Hi.
And Kopcho and Pollak are both absent from this vote.
And I'm sorry to interrupt again. Just so that it's clear what we were voting on, it was to reelect Ms. Griggs as president of the commission.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll entertain a second motion for the position of vice president. And you can raise your hand in the participant screen.
I'm sorry, did we want to announce the results of the vote?
It sounds like that was unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
We had no dissent. Commissioner Schweikert?
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and nominate our current vice president, Commissioner McKinley, to another year as our, serving as our vice president of the commission.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Levin, is that a second?
That is a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second by Levin. Discussion on the motion? Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, it's, I'm going to motion because it's my last year, so you guys can take over and do what you want with the next year, but I'd happy to serve one more year, I suppose.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Any further discussion on the motion?
And I'm sorry to interrupt again. If you could inquire if there are any more nominations?
Are there any more nominations for the role of vice president? I'm seeing no hands raised in the participant box. And is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Shelby, will you please call the roll, signify by saying aye if you approve, if you're in favor of the motion for Vice President McKinley to be continuing in that role? I think I covered it all last time.
Commissioner Augustine.
Aye.
Commissioner Griggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
Commissioner Schweikart.
Aye.
And Kopcho and Pollak are absent from this vote.
So unanimous, ayes with two not in attendance. Thank you. So the motion passed. Moving on to the consent calendar, Commissioner Heller, do you have a motion?
Oh, I move that we adopt the minutes from the December 15th, 2020 meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second that.
Okay, Commissioner Augustine.
Yes.
Commissioner Augustine is our second. Question on the motion? Shelby, will you please call the roll? And signify by saying aye, if you're in favor of the motion.
Commissioner Augustine.
Aye.
Commissioner Griggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley.
Aye.
Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
And Commissioner Schweikart.
Aye.
And Kopcho and Pollak are absent from the vote.
So unanimous vote with the two that are not in attendance. The motion passed. Thank you, Shelby. Moving on to public hearings, item 5.1, which is the appeal of partition case number PAR 20-13 for the 4204 Kirk Street South. Before we have you read that statement of criteria, Shelby, are there any ex parte contacts to declare or conflicts of interest? Seeing no raised hands in our participant box. Shelby, will you please read the statement of criteria?
This is a public hearing to consider an appeal of the planning administrator's decision on partition case number PAR 20-13 for a property located at 4204 Kirk Street South. The criteria applicable to this application are found in Salem Revised Code, SRC Chapter 205.005D for partitions. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing with statements or evidence sufficient to afford the planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony. The planning commission will then either continue the public hearing or leave the record open for at least seven days.
Thank you, Shelby. Olivia, are you ready?
I am. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Olivia Diaz with the Planning Division. I would like to enter the staff report presentation and additional comments sent out to you after the staff report into the record. We are here for an appeal of a partition 20-13 located at 4204 Kirk Street South. The request, the original request is to partition the existing lot at 4204 Kirk into two, two lots, two parcels of land, both for a single family in a single-family zone. The subject property is located on the corner of Kirk and Warren Street South, Browning, near Browning and Sunny, in the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. The subject property is ZONE RS, Single Family Residential, surrounded by a single-family residential in a subdivision. You can see Belcrest Memorial Park at the top of your screen. Here's an aerial photo showed of the property. You could see that the majority of the lots are relatively the same size, street grid kind of system going on with the dwelling facing Kirk Street. The tentative site plan that was submitted with the application proposes two parcels that both meet the minimum parcel size within depth standards for their single-family residential zone. The tentative planned was submitted by the applicant, showed potential street improvements, including sidewalks shown in green and the curb line shown in red. So we have some photos of the property. So this is on Kirk. The subject property is on the left of your screen. And then, looking down Warren Street, the property is on the right of your screen. The appeal came in from the applicant, saying that the conditions of approval, six and seven, were not proportional to the amount, amount of parcels being created. The staff report provides findings related to proportionality of improvements for the two lots. The applicant proposed a lesser street improvement, which is detailed in the recommended conditions of approval. Those conditions include installation of street trees along both frontages, pedestrian path shown in blue, and ADA ramp shown in the location where the little purple square is on the west side of Kirk Street to lead to the existing sidewalks on that side. The Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association did comment on the proposal, saying that there was lack of evidence to support the appeal and that street improvements, including the width of the travel lanes on Warren Street, should be widened. Staff recommends that you modify condition six and seven, as outlined in the staff report, and approve the planning and uphold the planning administrative decision, improve the application. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions of staff at this point? If you would use the raise your hand in the participant screen. Commissioner Slater?
Thank you. Olivia, just so I understand, the conditions that we will be voting on in the staff recommendations are conditions that were negotiated between the city and the applicant? Is that correct?
So the applicant provided that as a proposal with Public Works, and I believe that Glenn worked with, with the applicant to, to come up with those conditions, those modified conditions.
Am I reading that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my only question.
Okay, other questions? I had one question, and I think, is Glenn? Yeah, Glenn is on.
Glenn is here.
You may want to put this one to him. I know that the neighborhood associations, one of their concerns was the width of the streets. And I think Glenn did a very good job in that email that we received today, clarifying that it is a local street. And Glenn, do you want to speak to that, just in case somebody did not see your response on how you explained the local street width?
Sure. The, the local streets are, are, a concern of local streets is, is keeping the, the speeds down. And so the, the standard for a local street in our transportation plan, in the interest of keeping speeds down, is to have, it's a 30-foot street with parking on both sides, which works out to approximately 16 feet of travel lane between the parked cars. And so that's not really quite enough room for two cars to pass very easily. And so in most local streets, people, when they pass, will, will find refuge in a driveway and allow people to pass, and that keeps the speeds down quite considerably, which is good for, for pedestrian safety, it's good for traffic safety and all that. And so this, this street really has the same characteristic. And so for that reason, the original application had proposed a widening. But when that, that request came back in the appeal, we really didn't have a basis for saying there's a traffic problem here. It was more pedestrian safety, and so that's where we focused on the pedestrian aspects, not so much on the, on the traffic aspects. So that's, that was the gist of the email.
Yeah, that was a good response. Thank you, Glenn. Other questions of Glenn or Olivia at this point? I am not seeing any hands raised. Making sure I give you enough time. Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Olivia and Glenn. Move on to the appellate's representative, Mr. Grins, which, would you like to testify? And as you know, your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
I cannot operate my video, but that's okay. So that, again, all right, I got a, I got approval. Great. All right. Thank you very much. My name is Mark Grins, and I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is located at 1155 13th Street Southeast here in Salem, and we're representing the applicant in this matter before you tonight. We appreciate the, the planning commission's time and the extra effort that staff had to put in, and particularly Glenn, in, in working with me to come up with an alternative proposal to bring to you that would not make this project economically unfeasible, but would, but would also find a way to address what staff and we would agree that the most important element is to provide pedestrian safety in this area. You can tell by the photos that with the exception of the, of the west side of Kirk, this Warren Street and Kirk Street in here are pretty unimproved. And so on, on the surface, making these street improvements didn't, didn't sound too onerous. But once we got to evaluating what it was really going to take, given the condition of Warren Street and the condition of Kirk Street in there, it was going to become a pretty major project for us to do. It was going to push us in a position where we were going to have to essentially rebuild a three-quarter inch street on our side and a, and at least a half street on Kirk. Then that put us in, with the hard surface that we'd be recreating, and with the new house, we'd be in a position where we had to provide water quality and water quality control. So it just got, it got to be too, too onerous for the creation of one new single-family home. 10, essentially just 10 ADT was all we were adding in there. So we determined that, that we, we needed to appeal this to try, to try to have an opportunity to work with staff in order to come up with something that was more proportional to, to what was happening here. And, and I, and I think I understand the neighborhood association's concerns about, about what, what they have and, and what they hoped to acquire, but it's, it's just a problem that we have with a lot of these older neighborhoods where they were constructed back before there were formal street improvements in existence. And, and so to come in and try to force a partitioning to create one single-family home to start correcting a problem on a lot of frontage, the costs that we, we provided in an estimate, so you can see what those costs would be. It just becomes, it, the cost of the street would be more than the value of the law it was when we got down with it. So it just didn't work. So, so Glenn was good. He and I discussed some different options. This is what we came up together in order to, to, to make the process more proportional. We're happy to, to create the sidewalk, and we're happy to create the, the handicap ramp on the other side of Kirk, so pedestrians have a place to go, and to put in the street trees, so that we're, we're doing that to a, to enhanced area. So I don't think there's much else I need to add. We don't have any, any objection to the other conditions that were there and didn't have before. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of us tonight. And the applicant and, and his attorney are there to answer any questions if, if I'm not able to, or if you need something beyond the ability of an engineer to answer, that'd be, that'd be great.
Sounds great. Questions of Mr. Grins? Not seeing any hands raised. I think you might be off the hook, Mr. Grins, because I don't see.
You know, it's bound to happen sometime.
Thank you for your time. We'll move on now to the Neighborhood Association, and I believe we have Mr. Davis signed up to testify. And if you would please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Davis, and you have 10 minutes.
Good day. My name is William Davis, and I'm a resident of Ward 7, I live on Mitzer Street, 1485. I'm one block from this improvement. And basically, my writing has been pretty exhaustive as far as trying to cover a basis of what I've heard from the neighbors at the Sunny Slope Association. And the main concern we have is just what can happen in single-family zoning now? I mean, that's ultimately what it boils down to. The street is what it is. It was designed as a county property, as I understand it, in 1960. So it's just like my house. It's back when there was asbestos and lead paint and all these other things that we don't do anymore. So I guess the specific ask that we have is, if it's going to be a single-family home on this property, would it be any objection to a conditional zoning limitation of it being designated as a single-family home? Like, I know that recently happened on a nonprofit unit that was approved on, in the grant community. So that seemed like an idea that might be, resolve a lot of the neighbors' concerns of how many units could be put on this property without any actual street improvements. That's the biggest concern that we have. Along with that, I just wanted to point out that the testimony I submitted early this morning, before I went to work, it was basically going through the applicant's estimate, and it obviously is cost prohibitive with what they came up with, because, let me find it real quick. The specific amount that they had estimated for rock was 1.2 billion pounds of rock to actually improve the street, which, if we're going off of the street standard of 12 inches of rock base with 4 inches of asphalt, that would be 12 inches thick by 17 feet wide by 790 feet long. So that's a heck of a lot longer than the street frontage. That's probably even longer than the entire street of Warren. So that seems a little bit unrealistic, as well as the asphalt estimate was 4 inches thick by 17 feet wide by 510 feet long. So that's just crazy. So that, that's one of the things that we're concerned about also is that there just has been a lack of evidence, a lack of argumentation, a lack of actual support for this appeal until today. In the interest of saving time, I won't repeat myself of what all I have written. So feel free to move on.
Okay, well, are there any questions for Mr. Davis? Commissioner Schweikert?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So just to fully articulate the argument that the Neighborhood Association is making, your thought is that, given recent changes to state law in the use of a piece of land zoned for a single-family that is now, has the opportunity to place additional units in the middle housing category, the, the Neighborhood Association feels like the number of potential new residents to these lots is such that there would be a additional burden placed on the road infrastructure? Is that, can I, can I, can I make sure that I'm understanding that argument correctly?
Exactly. That's, that's the primary concern, is that the proportionality claim is based on specifically 10 trips per day. So if there's only one house added, that's only 10 trips per day. If there's a threeplex or a cottage cluster of four to six units, that's an entirely different situation, and it completely changes the impact on the street and the neighborhood.
Follow-up. Commissioner Schweikert?
No, I'll have follow-up with, for staff, but none for Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Any other, other questions for Mr. Davis? I'm not seeing any. Thank you for your time, Mr. Davis, for coming, coming to your phone to call us. And we don't have anybody else signed up. Before I get to Mr. Grins for rebuttal, are there other questions of staff? Commissioner Schweikert, did you have a question?
I had, I did. I had a couple of questions. The first one is for, probably for Glenn. I'm just wondering if the estimates that are provided by the applicant's representative for cost are reviewed for accuracy by Public Works?
Um, I mean, it depends on the purpose of the estimate. This particular case, I don't think there was any question that the, the costs, whether it was 80,000, 70,000, 60,000, 50,000, that was certainly, in any case, would, would certainly illustrate the, the lack of proportionality. So I'd let Mr. Grins speak for the details of, of any errors he may have made. Yeah, so the, this particular estimate was not reviewed in the level of detail like we would when we take a, we'll take a performance security for a permit, and that would go through a much more stringent estimate process. We just, we, we received it and, and saw that it was, it was roughly proportional, and, and it met the standard. The cost was not so much the, the issue as the, the proportionality question.
Did you have a follow-up? Commissioner Schweikert?
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. So, so the applicant's representative mentioned that the impetus for the appeal was to ensure that the, that the proposal can go forward and, and that the condition six and seven, once, once costed out, basically, once, once there was that kind of itemization of costs, were going to lead to an economic infeasibility for the project. And so I guess that was what I understood to be then the rationale for proportionality. And so maybe I'm misunderstanding the, the rationale for proportionality as the, as the city sees it.
Hopefully it helped. There's no, there's no equation for proportionality when it comes to street improvements. It's not like it's a, a numeric calculation. It's, it's a, it's a, it's not, it's not quite that, that rigid. And then, secondly, the, the street improvements are not designed yet, so there's some details we don't know yet that we would eventually build. The improvement could be not just a 17-foot improvement on, on one side. It could actually be a 17 with some on the opposite side. So there's, there's some kind of worst-case scenarios that, that Mr. Grins probably had accounted for in his estimate. I'd let him speak for, for kind of where he came up with his numbers. But it's, it's just, it's early to tell. So it's, normally in these cases, engineers will do a kind of a worst-case, a contingency-type estimate. That's, I'm guessing what this was. But like I said, I defer to, to Mark for any sort of questions about those details.
And we'll get to him in a minute. Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Schweikert, did you get a chance to ask the questions you wanted?
I think I just had one more question, and I, and I think that this was touched upon in kind of the back-and-forth emails that had occurred between Mr. Davis and Olivia. But I just want to confirm with Olivia. So the, the state regulations that are, are being, going to be implemented, what is the status, I guess, of how we evaluate this application based on those? Because there was, the, the comment that was made by Mr. Davis is that, you know, the evaluation on trips per day is based on one unit of housing. And I'm trying to understand if, if a, a traffic impact can be analyzed given the potential maximums that are allowed by, under this new state regulation?
Yeah, so the evaluation, it was evaluated based off the zone district, right? So the RS zone, single-family residential zone, which allows a multitude of uses, mostly single-family. When the application came in, our single-family zone allows for one, one unit in an ADU as a necessary unit. There is state laws, you know, House Bill 2001, that when, that is being worked on, the administrative rules made it clear, but we have yet to implement those rules. Those are not in our code. We're reviewing how we're going to do that. And it's not, so we can't move the goalposts on, on the applicant and say that you have to address this future code that's going to come into effect. The Neighborhood Association also commented about a previous land use application, which I'm assuming is the 905 Cottage Street proposal that we, that we looked at. We limited the number of units. That was a zone change. That was not just a subdivision, right? So we're not changing the zoning of the property. The zoning is changing the same. The uses are changing the same. And that's how the, the impact of traffic is calculated, is based off of the zoning and the uses in that zone. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so, so essentially, until such time that the administrative rules have been included um uh have been included into uh our code, um, that, you know, we are um evaluating uh applications that have come in prior to them, that information being, becoming part of our code um on the previous um uh or current uh standards uh for uh, for a subdivision.
Correct, we're looking at all of the requirements of um House Bill 2001, so there are some things that we can and cannot do, I think, for infrastructure under that bill. So because we haven't fully implemented it, we don't, we don't have the answers to those questions on how it'll affect the city, right? Because it's every property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Slater?
Thank you. Olivia, uh, if, if the applicant or a new owner were to go ahead and put in a building permit or a site plan review for a fourplex, for example, would the city then look at the infrastructure and the road capacity again?
Uh, we would, we would look at whether it's an allowed use in the code. I believe a fourplex, it depends on the size, is currently, I'm gonna have to bring up my screen, uh, a special use, so there are standards that could have, that uh this zone could potentially have more than single-family. I'm double-checking, Lisa's probably already got it up. Um, so
Based on?
No, fourplex is not allowed, so two-family could be allowed. We would just look at that and whether it met the standards or not. So currently, we would look at a fourplex and say it's not an allowed use. Uh, we wouldn't be looking at the infrastructure, um, the public infrastructure.
So just if I can ask a follow-up?
You bet.
So then the, from, from the neighborhood's perspective, the biggest risk here is that instead of having a single-family residence, they'd have a two-family residence?
Under the current code, that, that's probably, that might change when we, when we go through and adopt um the requirements of House Bill 2001, but we don't know what that's going to look like, if the lot size, if there's lot-size standards or different standards that are required for that.
Okay, so that still leaves a little bit of uncertainty as the density of people that could be on that lot.
Correct.
Oh, sorry, yeah, hi.
Oh, Lisa.
Sorry to jump in. Sorry, sorry, uh, Lisa, for the record, Lisa Anderson will be your planning administrator. Um, we, you know, the, the state laws, uh, they've already decided lot size, all of the uh implementing laws have been adopted at the state level. We'll probably be bringing some amendments forward in 2021 for the Planning Commission and the Council to, to adopt. Um, but those rules make it very clear that the, the rules that we apply for creating lots and, and building houses for single-family are going to be the same rules. We can't do any more, so there's not going to be ability for us to say, oh, the street was planned for a single-family and you're doing four-family, you have to do a traffic study. That's exactly the wrong thing under the bill, right? Everything has to be treated the same. So um if the street is wide enough for emergency vehicles, not to meet our standards, but wide enough for emergency vehicles is what it specifically says. If it's served by water, sewer, stormwater, then we don't have the ability to require anything else of them, for them to either build a fourplex, threeplex, or duplex depending on lot size. So um it's not just people coming through and partitioning, I know that's a concern that, you know, in this specific case, but every single lot, zone, single-family, which of course we're all pretty much built, assuming, you know, one house or one family. Um, this is the same concern we heard when we started allowing ADUs, you know, all the streets were built for one family and now we're doubling it. Well, in some cases now where it could be up to four, four more, you know, dwelling units than, than the plans were kind of envisioned, but that is the point of the House Bill and the cities don't have flexibility on that, so.
Now, now I have another question.
Oh, what?
If I understand correctly, the, the Neighborhood Association's concerns may be a valid concern, but it's one that we really can't take into consideration when we make our decision?
Correct.
Well, that's straightforward enough.
Did you have any other questions, Commissioner Slater?
I do not.
Wow, okay. Those were great questions. Uh, anybody else, a question of staff at this time before we turn it over to Mr. Grans for his rebuttal? And I'm not seeing any hands. Mr. Grans, would you like to rebut any comments? And you've got five minutes.
Yes, thank you. So I, I, I think the, the issue about the cost system I provided and, and, and I don't, Glenn is correct, you know, in the position that I'm at at this stage, I have to assume certain factors when I figure, figure these costs out. So I don't have the detailed information for the site soil conditions to know that I would be able to do something other than to assume that the soil quo would, would have to meet the default for poor. And the default for poor sets out the criteria for how deep the rock has to be and how thick the asphalt needs to be. So that's what I used in my analysis. Um, although, albeit the conditions stated that I had to do half-street improvement, we, we did an examine, a, a, a surface examination and for Warren Street, for instance, the, the remainder of the other half is, is in, is in terribly poor condition, so we would be likely be required to make sure that the opposite side, at least 12 feet on the opposite side of the street, met current design standards. The same thing could happen to us on Kirth. So we're, we're, we're having to assume that it's more than just a half-street when we're figuring out these costs of what we would, what we would have to do. So that's what the rock and asphalt sections were, the, and costs were figured out. But let's, let's just say that I'm wrong and I, and I only had to do half as much than I, than I estimated. I'd be reducing the rock cost from 16,000 to 8,000, and I'd be reducing the pavement cost from 24,000 to 12,000. So that's, that, I'm taking $22,000 out of that estimate. That estimate is $127,000 today. So if I were to take 22,000 out of that, I'm still pushing, and even if you factored it back to, I, I didn't any, I didn't even put any contingencies in here. This is just what I've estimated cost. You factor it back, so let's say it's 100,000. Does anybody have any, any, any question that $100,000 for street improvements? That's just the street improvements, by the way, there's not the other things that have to be happening to get serviced. Wouldn't put that, that single-family lot in an, in a, in, in a, a cost-prohibitive environment, so. But, but I, I, I assure you that I, and Glenn can probably attest, is I have been in positions where I have assumed optimistically and staff has proven that I should have been pessimistic in how I've done my analysis for my street designs and sections. So, so I'm trying to be real and fair and make sure that we're valuing this on the, on the basis it could have, so. But all the other things that are in there are real, they're, and they're not subjective, they are what it, they are exactly what it would take, the sidewalk, the curbs, the handicap ramps, the streetlights, the streetlight circuit, the erosion control, the, the striping, the driveway approach, the water quality and water quantity facilities that we'd have to do, those are all real. And I know they're real because we're doing them on every other project that we're doing. So, but I'm not seeing it here where somehow I'm off by a factor of, of two or three. That's not where I'm at here, so. So that's, that's the issue about, about costs and, and I think that it's just, that it's just one of those cases where older neighborhoods are going to be, are going to see more and more of this type of stuff as, as the city tries to encourage increased densities where we can, and that's what we should be doing, is, is adding dwelling units where we can. You're going to see more and more situations where be, because of the, because the costs are prohibitive, there's, there may have to be another way that comes about for how to get some of these streets improved in the future, so. But I, but again, I, I, I believe that staff at our office has come up with a reasonable way to make sure that pedestrians are safe and that some improvements are made to the, to the area that, that are, that are proportional to what we're, to what we can create out there. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have of me.
Okay, questions of Mr. Grans? And as you're thinking about raising your hand, um, Commissioner Copcho did join us. Shelby, I'm, I'm sure you made note of the time, but welcome, Commissioner Copcho.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Grans.
Welcome, thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? This is our last opportunity. Commissioner Schweickert?
I may sound like a broken record here, but that's okay. Um, I, maybe I should ask um Olivia and uh, and Lisa just to one more time, maybe summarize the um, the argument that condition six and seven as originally written um could be seen as a, a violation of a proportionality argument uh for the applicant. Because I guess that's part of where I'm a little confused as to kind of what the basis by which we make that determination, that they, you know, that they, that their claims are, 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 I guess, um, considered and found to be substantiated um by the city.
Lucy, are you taking that or is Olivia?
Lisa! I paused for a second, see, is Olivia gonna unmute? She, she didn't, I guess that's a clear sign. Okay, well, I'll, I'll give it a try and then see if Olivia um wants to jump in. And maybe a little background, I guess maybe, I know I talked to Commissioner Slater um about this background, which maybe is helpful. The city didn't ever used to require any frontage improvements for partitions until the UDC was adopted in 2014 because of a lot of infill and concerns about all these lots going in and, you know, no sidewalks, no improvements. We changed the code to say you have to do up to a half-street improvement. Um, and in the first few partitions we approved, we just treated them like subdivisions and said you need to do your boundary street improvement. Um, and then pretty quick it was uh clear that the actual costs, as they started trying to work with our engineers to do these improvements, uh made it so the partition made no financial sense. And then we had to rethink about, well, that's, that's not, that wasn't our intent, right? Um, and clearly is not proportional when you're just adding one lot. And um honestly, most of the partitions we do, we don't ever put the kind of conditions that we put on this one. Um, we do some sort of um, you know, hyper-specific analysis of the site, you know, is it a site that they can build sidewalks or add pavement if it's, that makes it more safe? Do they need a street light? Do they need street trees? What's some sort of um kind of mini-improvement that we can get that's short of a full street improvement um that will, you know, add some sort of safety features, pedestrian and vehicle if needed and still allow the partition to go forward? Now, in this case, we understood Mr. Grans's application to be their proposal to build the full frontages of both of these streets. And so we just put a condition, you know, we're the city, if you want to build us a really expensive frontage street, we're happy to let you do that. And so we just put a condition to say, hey, yeah, your application meets the code, you build those things, you meet the code. And so there was some kind of miscommunication um on, you know, their proposal and, and our review of that proposal. Um, so now on appeal, when we realized that, that that wasn't necessarily what they were intending to do, um, we were, you know, then our response was, well, that's not what we would have proposed to begin with because we think that costs too much because of our experience with other partitions and just knowing how, how much, you know, it is to do a half-street improvement for any link, especially a corner lot like this is, that's going to have two, you know, two streets. So um we did, of course, ask Mr. Grans for the appeal to provide more financial information. Um, so it's not just staff saying, we know streets are really expensive, but I, I think, you know, we do know streets are really expensive, um, and Glenn can tell you that. And so when you're just adding one lot, um, it just seems that, you know, from our collective kind of um professional experience, that that, that is a cost that's too much to bear to create one lot. And so that's why we came up with this um, you know, uh, agreement about other things that could be done that will improve the safety uh as much as can happen there, getting extra right-of-way, we're getting on Kirth, which is a collector, which actually will save the city money in the long term, right? When we're ready to, to build that improvement, um, having a path area for pedestrians to um have some sort of safety when they're walking for a little bit there, street trees in the ultimate location, so as they grow bigger, the streets are widened, they don't have to be removed. And then I think Olivia mentioned the, the curb ramp. So I don't know if Olivia, if you have anything you want to add to that, but?
No, you described it really well.
I don't know if that's helpful.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner? A follow-up?
Oh, no follow-up, no.
No follow-up? Okay, any other questions of staff?
Yeah, we'll just, um, Commissioner Griggs, I, I think maybe you should give the applicant one more chance for rebuttal since I said a bunch of new stuff and they're supposed to always have the last word on their case.
Would you like that last word, Mr. Grans?
I always take as many last words as I can. They're very few and far between. But, but no, staff did a great job of outlining the proportionality and, and I think that my staff was confused of what we were trying to represent versus the reality and, and we'll try to be uh better in the future, making sure that we're, that we're more clear about where we headed. And I think partially we did, we, we, we did a more detailed review after the fact of what it was going to cost and re- recognize that it, it just wasn't going to be economically feasible, so. But thanks, thanks for giving me that opportunity to speak again.
You're welcome. Any questions of Mr. Grans? Seeing no hands raised, you, you really did have the last word. Okay, I'm closing the hearing. Commissioner McKinley?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the staff report on item 5.1.
And that, yeah, who's my second?
Copcho.
Copcho, thank you very much. Uh, so we have a motion and a second, and just clarification, it's the approve the tentative partition plan with the modified conditions of approval um that was, were sent out on the last revised staff report.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, discussion on the motion. Commissioner Schweickert?
Um, yeah, I think that um the, I will go ahead and, and um uh vote to approve uh the appeal with the um conditions as modified. Um, I, I think it would be really helpful um if we could, um, and I don't know if this is something that um we can talk more about um at a later date, but to think through um how uh the, if there is a uh kind of formalized process, if there could be a formalized um process in writing for how um, when um staff asks for additional information um with regards to um costs on a particular item, how we evaluate and um confirm uh, uh such costs um for uh any, you know, any particular item that deals with a um, a development. The reason why I think, and this is not a standalone um uh application in which I've thought about that, um, actually thought about a, a, a hearing that we uh heard, I guess, it has to be at least a year ago now, because we were in person for it, um, but it was when we um heard about the um Tax and Commitment Financing District um that the City Council went forward to approve for the jury apartments. And the fact that the um, there was a financial pro forma provided by the developer that said, well, it's only going to be financially feasible for us to provide 10% of these units as below-market-rate units. And I wasn't able to get a very uh, what I considered a, a great justification from the community development, uh, I think it's the Community Development Director or Urban Development Director, as to how the city went about evaluating that financial pro forma to, to ensure that, yes, it's true that, you know, we, we can only see the financial feasibility uh that the applicant is, is, is claiming. Um, and, and so I guess it's just like the process by which we evaluate claims of financial feasibility or infeasibility is something that I, I, I would really like to, to have us look at more because I don't, I, I think that we need a stronger um procedure and process internally um to evaluate the, the, those kinds of claims uh with regards to the um providing and evaluating those, those costs, cost um, cost uh submissions, I guess, if you will. Um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Schweickert. Commissioner Slater?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize and thank uh Mr. Davis, that would be Mr. William Davis, uh, for all the work that he put into this um appeal. I was a former land use chair and I know how much time and energy he put in and I appreciate his participation. I don't think he's going to be particularly happy with our decision today, uh, but I think, uh, I think his contribution was valuable and I certainly read all his material.
Agreed, Commissioner Slater, it was, he did put a lot of time, as you could tell by his materials. Any other comments and deliberations? I am not seeing any hands raised. So Shelby, would you please call the roll and signify by saying aye if you approve the motion?
Commissioner Augustine?
Aye.
Commissioner Griggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Heller?
Aye.
Commissioner Copcho?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schweickert?
Aye.
And Commissioner Slater?
Aye.
And Pollock is absent.
Thank you. So that was a unanimous approval with the absence of Commissioner Pollock noted. Okay, moving on to, I think we go right down to the planning administrators' report, Lisa.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I do have a few updates. Eunice is going to be at the Planning Commission on February ninth. Well, I'll be with her, but Eunice will be here for our Salem. So it's coming back to Planning Commission before it goes to council. We've been doing a lot of work on different scenarios and and updates to the to the map since it was presented last fall, last, I don't remember what month that was now, September, October or something. And so our plan is that it will come to Planning Commission first for some feedback and then it will go to council, asking council to accept the vision and direct us to move forward with the, all the rest of the work that will go with the vision. So February ninth, hopefully you can all be here for that. Some other stuff that I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're we're working on, but please don't hold me to these timeframes. We are working on the Sign Code Amendment. Olivia and Erin and I have been meeting every other week or so to go over amendments and hopefully early this spring, we'll have a draft to bring forward to the Planning Commission. And it got, it turned into a bigger project than I think we were thinking as we started looking at it. It's, it's been probably over a decade since the city's looked at it. We've been given some informal direction of some changes to make from the council. There's a lot of consolidation that we think can happen. It seems like every zone has its own three pages of how the signs work in that zone. And then it's just like slightly different from the next zone. And it's like really the longest code section ever. Way more complicated than it needs to be. So we're trying to streamline it, do research on what other cities, you know, how they organize their code, et cetera. So hopefully we'll be able to bring that back soon. Bryce has started on another round of UDC amendments and we're hoping to combine the House Bill 2001 amendments that we were just talking about in with a package of UDC amendments that Bryce would be working on. And our tentative date would be to start work sessions with the Planning Commission in April on a draft, so. And when I say we started, our first meeting was today. So we have, we have a lot of work to do and Bryce's list is really long of the kind of cleanup amendments that we want to do. Some are more more substantial substantial than just cleanup, but and then obviously the House Bill amendments. So we're hoping to work through that and do like, I think, worked pretty well with our last big package of UDC amendments. I think we had two or three Planning Commission work sessions. We kind of brought them in chunks and went through them all before we started the public hearings and those work sessions were open to the public and you allowed testimony on the code amendment. So hopefully we can do that again. So I've put him on a schedule of April. Whatever we get done by April, we have to start bringing it forward. But that just is dependent on how many applications come in, right? Because that always comes first. And I got an update from Public Works last week on the street tree code and they haven't started yet and they're behind and they're not ready to start yet. So they will let us know when they're ready to start. And I did reiterate that Commissioner Slater and Commissioner Heller would like to be the Planning Commission kind of rep in some meetings with them to talk through that. So they are aware of that. We did have our two new planners start last week, so we're training two new planners over Teams and and Zoom, Kyle and Jamie, they're both planner twos, one's from California and one's from Medford. So we're really excited about that and we're all staffed up with planners and probably be a while before they come to Planning Commission unless something goes drastically wrong with one of their cases. But we try to start them with simpler stuff than things that go to Planning Commission. So we're really excited about that. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Copcho has a question for you.
I do, thank you, Lisa. Could you clarify, and I think you did this before, but can you clarify again? What the, is there going to be an action taken on our Salem when it comes back to commission before going to council? Or is that more information reports?
It's more information report style, but we'll want to obviously get your comments. The the crunch for us is that we have committed to going back to council in February and we are still waiting to get a bunch of the data, you know, it took us a long every, it's like to 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 work back from like when we have something to present and work back and have all the data, right? We have to do a lot of analysis on how does it affect the GHG? How does it affect transportation? All of those measures that we're doing, you know, with our Salem, remember when we started and we picked all those measures? How are we going to know if this scenario is doing the right thing? Are we meeting our multifamily needs, et cetera, et cetera? To do all that analysis takes a really long time. And so we've been spending the last few months doing outreach, right, on changes. And since that time, the council set a GHG goal, so we made a bunch of changes to try to address that, et cetera, et cetera. And so I just texted Eunice before I turn on my camera and I'm like, I can commit to a date, right? February ninth? And she's like, yes, but it's information only. I won't have a staff report because I won't have all the data that day yet. So it's like, it's literally down to the wire for us to get it ready to take to council at the end of the month because we have to backdate everything for their for their council agenda. So there's no action required, but we did want, because we had the, the last time we've checked in, it was the council and the Planning Commission together, right? So we just wanted to make sure that we have that conversation with you all, get any feedback that you have and then take it to council. So council's not adopting. We made up this term acceptance. I don't know, it's not really a theme for anything, but we were going to ask them to accept accept the vision, in other words, buy off on it with at least a majority to tell us we're on the right path again. Because we have a lot more work to do and it's pretty detailed and intensive work, such as creating new zoning codes, rewriting a lot of the zoning codes, writing the entire policies document, et cetera. And we don't want to do all that work and then have them be like, well, I actually didn't really agree with the vision that you came up with in the first place. So this is really a, an official check-in, but they're not adopting anything. And I guess if we're on the wrong path, if we come in and you all tell us and the council says, no, 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 then that well means we have more work to do, but we won't jump into to writing the code and writing the policies document. Instead, we'll have to do some sort of, you know, more course correction than what we've been doing the last few months, so.
It did. Can I ask a real quick follow up?
Sure.
I I could, I could say this for February, but the email just came to me. The Verdis Group put out a new GHG consumption based report. Is that something that you've already incorporated or worked to incorporate?
Yeah, so it's not, I mean, it's incorporated in the same way that the the our Salem and the Climate Action Plan are, are, you know, going, working together. So Eunice is on that committee, they're on our committee and we're, you know, considering that all together. I will tell you a sneak peek that none of the scenarios, no matter what we do with land use, it doesn't just solve our climate woes, right? There's, there's no amount of zoning that we're going to be able to do or rezoning or changing the zoning. No amount of high-rise, you know, zoning or anything like that, no matter how we change it, that's going to make that better. So a climate action plan is really going to have to address the non-zoning things, which will will be things like, you know, make people pay for parking, increase transit, make everybody switch over to electric vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. There's no amount of zoning that will solve that problem. So at some point, it's a little bit removed from the, from the zoning map.
Commissioner. Commissioner Schweikert?
Yeah, well, Lisa brought it up, so I guess I'm going to go and ask the question of the Climate Action Plan Task Force. I know that when it was originally created, it was considered that it would be an 18-month process for that task force. And so I'm just wondering, is it possible, Commissioner Copcho, that we could get like a status update now that we're closing in on the six-month mark for that group?
I'm happy to have Eunice come and give a status update.
We have a meeting tomorrow, too.
Yep. There is a task force meeting tomorrow and so February seems like an opportune time to do that, an update.
That'd be great.
Commissioner Slater.
Thank you. Last question for the meeting. Given the, given the constraints on just the fact that we have an existing city here and the council has set, you know, an ambitious greenhouse gas reduction goal, is there really a lot of policy discretion that you have? Were there a lot of options available to us or does the plan at this point pretty much just force itself on you?
You mean the policy decisions in our Salem?
Yeah, and some of the zoning requirements. I mean, is there a lot of discretion at this point or you just?
Yeah, I I mean, Eunice and I have identified a handful of themes that we're going to bring as policy questions to move, that that we think could help move the needle. And it's really, I I I won't, I won't give you the, you know, because we haven't fully landed on it. So it's a little early for me to say what those things are. But it's really going to be the difference between, is our goal as a city to allow people to do certain things, right? Or we just, hey, you can do anything you want anywhere, right? Or hey, you can do mixed use, et cetera. Or is it really going to be to require people to do things? These properties can only be developed if you do a certain amount of housing units, right? In areas where we want it, for example. So it's really going to be, and and, you know, we're breaking them down more specifically, but there's really, I think, a policy decision ultimately for the council about how aggressive they want to be and if they want, really want to try to meet this goal and want, you know, through land use, which can do it a little bit, not a lot, but a little, then they need to decide if if they want to inflict things on property owners that maybe are unpopular with certain property owners, right? There's, you know, we've been talking about for a long time through our Salem, allowing mixed use on all of our major corridors. Everyone's like, great, we should have mixed use on our major corridors. Great, but does that mean anyone's going to build mixed use? That's different than saying, if you build a building over the size, it has to have a certain amount of units, period, right? And those could result in a totally different city in 20 years, this, the the choice between those two things, so. So no, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that it's just, there's no choices. I think there's some significant choices for the Planning Commission and the council to consider next month, so. Don't miss the meeting.
Any other questions of Lisa during this part of our agenda? Seeing none, thank you, Lisa. Comments for the good of the order? Any good comments? Raise your hand, last chance. Commissioner McKinley?
I've got 95 flag submissions so far.
Wow. You're busy.
And some of, some of them are actually good.
Good, well, good. I hope so. Okay, any further comments for the good of the order? Then we're adjourned, you guys take care.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Happy New Year.